Good evening, everyone. Thank you for joining us this evening. The work session of the Board of Trustees of the Spring Independent School District is officially called to order on Thursday, February 6, 2020. The time is now 6:08 PM. Trustees present, Winford Adams Jr., Debra Jensen, Justine Durant, Jana Gonzalez, Donald Davis, and myself, Rhonda Newhouse. We know that Ms. Hodges is on her way, should be here shortly, and we will recognize her when she is able to get here. She's in traffic. I would like to ask everyone to turn off or silence their cell phones or electronic devices, please. Thank you. The next order of business tonight is a review of the minutes from previous meetings. Does any trustee have any changes or corrections to the minutes of the January 9, 2020 board work session, or the January 14, 2020 regular meeting? Okay. Hearing none. These items will be submitted as a part of the consent agenda at the February 11, 2020 Board of Trustees Regular Meeting. We will now hear from our Superintendent of Schools, Dr. Rodney Watson.
Thank you, President Newhouse and other Board of Trustees, and principals and everyone in the room. Good evening. There's just a few announcements that I have, first of which is thank all of our cabinet and our principals for a very positive state of the district yesterday. I'm really excited about all of you all's hard work and the hard work of our cabinet. So, thank you all very much for your support. In addition to that, we have a very straightforward agenda tonight. We're going to be hearing from our partners at Purdue-Brandon for our delinquency property tax report, and they're going to be here to provide us an update. In addition to that, we have Dr. Cobb who's coming to give us our annual taper report, which goes into a lot more detail of our student achievement data that we're going to be presenting to you all tonight. And then, of course, we have all of the fund policies, most of which are second readings, and we have some new ones coming from our Governance Committee. And then, of course, all of Ann's favorite things that she'll do towards the end of our agenda tonight that we all love so much. That does conclude my report, and we're ready to get started.
Thank you, Dr. Watson. So, our next item is Agenda Participation, which allows members of the public an opportunity to speak on agenda items before these items are considered by the Board. Chief Hill, do we have anyone registered to speak under Agenda Participation?
No, Madam President, we do not.
Okay. Thank you. So, for our next item, and I'd like to recognize trustee Hodges. Glad she was able to make it here safely. We know she comes from afar in that traffic you never can tell about, so thank you for making it here safely. For our next item, I'd like to recognize our Chief Financial Officer, Ann Westbrook.
Thank you, President Newhouse and members of the Board. This evening, we have our annual report of delinquent taxes that we'd like to present to the Board. As you know, each year, we turn over our taxes that we have not been able to collect. By July 1 of each year, we turn it over to our delinquent tax attorneys at Purdue-Brandon, and they pick up the ball and start the process of collecting those for us. And so, I'd like to ask Ms. Yolanda Humphrey with the Purdue-Brandon Tax Office to please come up and present this year's report.
All right. Madam President, Dr. Watson, members of the Board, thank you so much for having us here tonight. I will, as Ms. Westbrook said, we take over the delinquent accounts on July 1 of each year. When it's turned over to us, your tax office has actually done a great job. On average, they've collected already 98, 99% of the taxes that are owed. So, we're talking about 2% of the roll that's actually turned over to us. So, on this first pie chart that I have, I have three pie charts. The first one is going to give you an account breakdown, and then the second one is for the dollar amounts, and then I also have one that's for the years. So, for the account breakdown, you'll see that the largest section is End Litigation. So, that means that we've filed a suit. The suit might still be pending. We may not have taken a judgment yet. Included in here are judgments that we have taken, property that's maybe set for sale. So, it's the whole range once the suit has been filed. Then you'll see the next section is Action Pending, and 20% of the roll, about 20% of the roll is there. That is when it's first termed over to us on July 1, and what we do is we send out letters, we make phone calls, and we attempt to set up payment agreements, and so that's where that is. And then, each section subsequent to that, I have that labeled. Now, on the dollar range chart, you have 35% of your delinquent roll. Those are accounts that are $10,000 and above. Most of those accounts, the high-dollar accounts like that, they're usually tied up in CAD litigation, or they're in bankruptcy, so it's something that we are waiting or sitting on. But then, the other accounts, you have 15% that are $5,000 to $10,000 owed, and then it just goes around to the smaller amount. Okay, on the tax year chart, your largest section is 2010 and prior, and that's just because it's grouped. 2018 is really the largest amount for the taxes, and that's because it was just turned over to us. So, on these next pie chart, on the next pie chart, I'm sorry, bar chart, what we're showing is each full year of collection, how much has been collected. So, this is from July 1 to the following June 30. So, you can see for the 2013 tax year, we've collected 87% of what was turned over, and on that, that's year 5 through partial year 6. And it's the same thing for each of these years, so I want to get to 2018 and show you. So, the 2018 taxes were turned over to us on July 1 of 2019, and so these numbers go through December of 2019. So, for the first six months of when they were turned over to us, we've managed to collect 68%, 69% of what was turned over. So, roughly $2.2 million. And that's what I have. I know I may have gone through that fast, so if you have any questions, I'm definitely willing and able to answer.
So, we see we have a remaining $1 million.
On this one here? Yes, we have a million remaining. Yes. And so, for the first year, our goal is usually to have 70% collected by the end of the first year, so that would be June 30 of 2020. And so, we pretty much collected, we pretty much met our goal for that already, so we expect it to be larger than that. So, on our 2017, so 2017 taxes, the first full year, we were able to collect 77.68%. But as I said, the average is typically around 70% of that one year that was just turned over. So, not all years, but the full tax calendar year of what we've had. So, the past few years have been really good.
Thank you.
May I ask a question? On the page, pie chart, seeing the funds that are uncollected, there's one category that's called Bad Address.
Which pie chart is that? Oh, the activity?
The very first pie chart.
Right. The account breakdown? Okay.
It says Bad Address. What does that include?
Bad Address? So, that's coded. We have actually skip traces, and that's just our research department. These are how the accounts are coded on our system. And so, when they're coded Bad Address, it goes to that group, and they search through to find good addresses for it. Because initially, the statements are going out to the address that's on the appraisal roll, which oftentimes may not be correct. So, we'll get that information from the tax office. We help them with that also. And so, it's just us categorizing it so that we know that we're searching for the address. Once we've located it, then it moves into one of these other sections.
So, someone may want to pay their taxes if they haven't gotten the bill because of the bad address.
Right. But it is the taxpayers' responsibility to keep that information up to date with the appraisal district.
All right. I want to thank you all for collecting these things.
Thank you.
Because I know you have a heart when you talk to these people, and that I know that in the past, that somebody has owed a small amount of taxes, and you've said, "Your property's worth more than this." You know, if you're in financial trouble, you could sell it and pay the taxes.
Right.
Because sometimes it's, we wind up owning property that's worth quite a bit.
Exactly.
But we only can sell it for the taxes.
Right. And we do, we tell, we recognize that they're your constituents and parents and everything in the community, so we do try our best to work with them along with the tax office. And they're, they're pretty reasonable with most of these taxpayers. When it gets to litigation, and sometimes it gets to sale, we were actually just talking about how our office on Friday was just packed, and it was people that were coming in trying to pay the taxes to avoid the sale this past Tuesday. Yeah. So, there are people, they just wait until the last money and, I mean, the last moment. "Well, the stamp would be cheaper, just send it in." You know, just send it in instead of stalling, but yeah.
Thank you. Thank you.
So, it looks like sort of we, what we turn over to you, like we sort of max out at about 87%. Is that right?
Usually, more than that.
It is usually more than that?
Yeah.
So, is there like a percent that we just never really get to?
Yes. Yes.
And that's about what?
I don't have, I don't have one for that. Um, let me go back. So, for this pie chart here, on Account Breakdown, if you see the blue, it's Uncollectible, and that's about 10% of the roll that we have right now of the delinquent tax roll. So, about $600,000.
And to put that into perspective, when she says 10%, it's 10% of what we've turned over to Purdue.
Which is 2% of.
Correct. We typically turn over about 2% of the total roll as uncollectible to them, and as she said, they collect 70% of it in the first year that they have it, so then you're talking 2%, 10% of what's left.
Right. So, 10% of the 2% that was turned over. They take here.
My ultimate broader question, though, so we attended a meeting where they talked about the implications of the 2.5% cap on taxes, and how if you exceed that 2.5%, you can either do a TRE, or you can reduce your tax rate to fall within that 2.5%. So, when we're talking about what seem like really small percentages, but I'm wondering about the implications of that as we move forward under HB3.
The biggest concern right now is we are in the second, we're about to go into the second year of the biennium, which means it's further compressing our tax rate, and so it's going to be based upon how much the district's tax base grows. And so, the more we grow, the lower our maintenance and operations tax rate goes down. And so, that means the less we're bringing in from our taxpayers, the more that we're, we're going to receive from the state. And so, the bigger concern is the state being able to maintain that level of funding. So, if we're not receiving it from the taxpayers, then we're depending on the state aid, and is the state going to be able to maintain that level of funding? That, that's the concern right now with the HB3 tax compression.
And that's yet to be seen.
And that's yet to be seen because we're about to go into this next year, which is where we'll see the tax rate further compressed, which means the state aid portion becomes larger. And so, yes, we'll receive our payments, but it's just making sure that they can sustain it at the state level. Yes, sir.
Thank you, Ms. Humphrey.
Thank you. We saw Ms. Humphrey turn around a couple of times. Our Tax Assessor Collector, Dorset Neely, is in the audience as well, so I just wanted to show her or make sure she stood up real quick so you all know who she is. And so, they've survived January, which is our biggest tax selection month. That's no, no small feat.
It was nice to see that she was still smiling at the state of the district when I spoke to her. It's the first of February, and she's still smiling. Thank you. For our next item, I would like to recognize our Assistant Superintendent of Research, Accountability and Testing, Dr. Jennifer Cobb.
Good evening, President Newhouse, Board of Trustees, Dr. Watson, members of Cabinet. Tonight, I have the pleasure of presenting to you a very dense report called the Texas Academic Performance Report. So, what is the Texas Academic Performance Report? It's the annual report that TEA produces that includes state, district, and school level data. The data is disaggregated by ethnicity, or race and/or race, economic status, English language learners, and special education. And why do we have this public hearing? We're required to have a public hearing based on the Texas Education Code, Chapter 39, Section 39, that require that each district's Board of Trustees publish the annual report that includes the taper, and the hearing must be held within 90 days of the release. This school year, the release was on December 12. Okay, so we are first going to get into the district profile data. We knew this year, for those of you who have seen this report before, we, as much as we could, we tried to incorporate three years' worth of data, and you'll see this on this, on the district profile data set, that you'll see three years on the bar chart, where you can see that our Hispanic population has been the majority of our population for the past three years. It's been more years than that, but three years are shown here, followed by African-American, and then white. And the, and we call them donut graphs. And the donut graphs at the bottom, you'll see the race and ethnicity breakdown for 2018, 19 compared to Region 4 and Texas. And as you can see, our district is, has a smaller Hispanic population than the region in the state, even though that is our majority race and ethnic population. African-American is second with 40% at the district level, and then followed by white. And you can see between, for Region 4 and Texas, their African-American population is smaller, and their white population is larger. So, this, these line graphs that you see here are going to be throughout the rest of the report. I'm going to take a minute just to explain them to you so that we can, as we go along, there's lots of slides here, that it will be hopefully easy for you to read as we go along. So, what we have here is the 2016, 17, 2018, and 2018, 19 school year. Usually, when I'm going to, when I'm going to say what year it is, it'll probably be 2017 to 2019, so that you know I'm mentioning the first year listed and then the last year listed. So, what we have here is the ethnic composition of SISD students and teachers. The first set of line graphs is African-American, then Hispanic and white. And then, for our smaller subgroups, what we did is we just put them in table form. The blue line graph are the students, and the orange line graph are our teachers. And what you can see is over the past three years for African-American, our African-American student and our African-American teacher population has been fairly representative of each other. And for Hispanics, there is a, we have a higher percentage of Hispanic students compared to Hispanic teachers. And then, for white, it's flipped in that we have a higher percentage of white teachers compared to white students. Okay? So, this next slide gives you three years' worth of data compared to the region and the state regarding our economically disadvantaged status. The economically disadvantaged status is in the, for Spring is in the blue, in the Region 4 it's orange, and Texas it's green. As you can see, we're, we have a higher population of economically disadvantaged students compared to the region and the state. We, I will tell you that we have done our paint snapshot for this year, and we are projecting that we're going to be around 82.7% next year. So, it's going to be a vast difference, and that's probably going to change all of our data when economically disadvantaged is labeled. And that's mainly due to having the online registration process at the beginning of the year. 82.7. Okay. So, that is the end of really the district profile of data, so we're going to start going into academic performance. These performance thresholds are really discussing STAR, and these categories listed here, this is straight from TEA, this is their, their language of what Approaches, Meets, and Masters is. And we went ahead and put this in here because we're going to be looking at these at all three levels, and we want to make sure that everybody has a similar understanding of what those levels are. So, Approaches grade level indicates that students are likely to succeed in the next grade or course with targeted academic intervention. Approaches is kind of synonymous with saying they passed. Meets grade level is the category that students have a high likelihood of success in the next grade or course, but still may need some short-term targeted academic intervention. Your Board Goals, the CIP goals that you have seen over the year, over this year, have all been at this level, at the Meets grade level. And then, the Masters grade level, our students are expected to succeed in the next grade level or course with little or no academic intervention. So, as we go along, we're going to be looking at different performance thresholds and our subpopulations and how they did. So, in this first slide, we, again, are looking at the race and ethnic categories compared to all students. We have Spring ISD in the blue, Region 4 in the green, and Texas in the orange. These are going to start looking somewhat the same to you, so I just want you to make sure that you keep reading the titles. So, in this case, we are looking at all of the reading tests at the Approaches level for these different groups. So, you can see that Spring ISD is lagging behind the region and the state when I'm looking at all students and for the categories that are reported here. However, what you will see, what is one of the benefits of doing this longitudinal data reporting, is that you can see that we are upticking in every category over the three-year period. Okay, we're looking at the same data now. We are moving on to Math, and this is still at the Approaches level. Again, we have an increase in performance from the 17 years compared to the 2019 year for every group except white that stayed the same. Now, looking at Writing. Again, we are behind the region and the state, however, you will see that there is an improvement between the 17 school year to the 2019 for every category. And for Science, sorry, my pages are stuck together. Okay, so, for Science, there is, same look at the data. This would be for Fifth and Eighth Grade and Biology Combined. You will see that between the 2017 and 2019 school year, all students stayed, at the Approaches level, stayed the same, as well as for African-American. For Hispanics, there was a very slight increase, and for white and Asian, there's a slight decrease. And then, finally, Social Studies. You will see that, again, we're behind the region and the state, however, every category, again, had an increase from 2017 to 2019. So, we've been looking at all of this data by individual subjects. Taper also reports all subjects altogether for the different performance levels. So, what this data is showing you is all subjects combined at the Approaches level. And what you can see for all students and the race and ethnic groups listed here, that they are all at an improvement from 2017 to 2019. With this look, we also are going to take a look at the special populations. The all-student data is the same as it was on the previous slide, but now we're looking at Special Education, Economically Disadvantaged, and English Language Learners. As you will see, there is an increase in performance for Special Education and for Economically Disadvantaged, as well as for, for English learners, and notably, in English learners, the improvement is by 9%. Okay, so we have been looking at the Approaches level, so if you remember the different definitions of the performance levels, now we're looking at all subjects combined at the Meets level. And so, for all students, we are lagging behind the district, or behind the state and region. However, we are seeing an improvement in every race and ethnic group from 2016, 17 to 2018, 19, for all, all of those listed. And for the, some of you have, I will say, some of you have an older version. I think the Board was updated. Is that right?
Yeah.
Okay. The Board had to update a slide. Cabinet, if you're seeing something different, the slide was updated. Just a minute. I saw some scratching of the head. Sorry, I was watching you all. Okay, so, looking at the Meets level, again, but for the special populations, again, we're looking at Special Education, Economically Disadvantaged, and English Language Learners. Again, the performance is slightly below the state and the region, but you will notice that the gap difference is a lot less. And you will see that there's improvement in every group except for the English Language Learners that remained equal. So, what this lack in a gap could actually be indicating is that we do a pretty similar job to, to the state and the region as far as addressing our special populations. So, finally, at the Masters level, and remember that the criteria for reaching these levels gets harder and harder, so that's why your percentages start to decrease for everybody as we go from slide to slide. So, now, we're at the All Subjects Masters level, and for all, for all student, all student groups that are listed here, there is improvement from 2016, 17 to 2018, 19, and notably, the Asian population has a 5% increase. And then, one more time, looking at the special populations, there again is an increase for every group listed here. Okay? So, what we have been looking at is student achievement, which is essentially what performance level rating, what performance level did the students achieve when they took the test. The next two slides are addressing academic growth. In the 2016, 17 year, there was no academic growth indicator, which is why we only have two years of data for this slide. And as you will see, we are slightly below the state and the region, and for every subgroup except for Asian, there is a decline. And this is for Reading. And it should be noted that for Reading, growth scores are available for Grades 4 through 8 and English 2. And the reason for that is you have to have two years' worth of data in order to measure growth. And going to the next slide, it's the same look, but now with Math. And you will see that all student groups, African-American and Hispanic, had a decline. Whites remain the same, and Asian had improvement. Okay, so this takes us out of really the Star Performance section, and now we're going to be looking at the College Readiness Indicator data. I should say that for, in many cases, the data will be lagging a year and sometimes two years. It's noted in the header, and I will, as much as possible, try to point that out to you. In addition, in some place, in some cases throughout the presentation, I will be, we have inserted data that is outside of taper, but it is addressing questions that you've had previously, so we went ahead and included it so that you would have all that you need in this presentation. So, going to the first set of bar graphs, you will see that the percent tested in AP has increased from 2015 to 2018 from 16.5 to 23.8. In our district, we do not do IP testing yet. We have to let the Springwood Village students matriculate, so this is solely for our, in our case, just AP students. In the bottom bar graph, you will see that the percentage meeting the criterion, the criterion being a three or higher, has decreased over time, and that is the reason why we have those tables to the right. You will see that the participation counts, as you saw, the number's growing. We have gone from 726 students in 2015 to 1,089 students, which is a 363 student increase, which is pretty good, pretty remarkable. But however, when, the more kids you have testing, sometimes that also means that the percent that's going to pass tends to, as far as percentages, tends to go down, and that's what you were seeing in the bottom bar graph. So, in that case, we lifted out the number that met the criteria so that you can see that even though the percentages are going down, the number is going up of those who are meeting the criteria. Going to the next slide. We have provided SAT day, I believe, since 2015. We have provided SAT day, I believe since 2015, repeat this, since 2015. So this data is from 2016 through 2018. As a result of providing SAT day, we are higher than the state for every group and every category for the past three years. So the SAT results now. We are looking at ELA and writing. And for the class of 2016, they were under a different scale score. They would, they had a 2,400 scale score. Now it's back to the 1,600 that you may remember when you were in college. So as a result, we are, we're just reporting the two years. So this is for the class of 2017 through the class of 2018. And you can see that we're below the region and the state. However, we have growth in every area. Going to the next slide. Same look, but now mathematics. In this case, we have increases in every subgroup again, except for Hispanic that has a decrease. Now we're looking at advanced course and dual credit course completion. This data lags a year, so this is for 2015-16 through 2017-18. As you can see, we kind of followed, we are a little bit behind the region and the state. However, we're following the trend that they are, that there is an uptick in performance. If you look at the all-student level, we have, that is a 10% increase for us in the course completion. And you saw that earlier in the data that we presented on this. And every subgroup also has an increase. And then we went ahead and looked at special ed, economic disadvantage, and Ls for this dataset. Again, you'll see that they also are experiencing uptick. Notably, special education went from a 3.5 in 2015-16 to a 14.8, which then at that point exceeded the region. And then you'll also see for the Ls, they also had, the English language learners, they also had a nice increase of, I believe that's 12.1% between 2015-16 and 2017-18. So now we're going to look at graduation type. So this is for the class of 2018. This is the first graduating class that is graduating on the House Bill 5 graduation plan. And so we had some stragglers from the previous plan, which was the four-by-four plan. So you see in yellow and dark blue is the old plan. You'll have only about 2%, 1% depending on which pie you're looking at of students. The rest of them are on the House Bill 5 grad plan. And we anticipate this next year, that that old grad plan will essentially be out of the picture, and you will only have the foundations plan. So the lighter blue foundation plan, distinguished level of achievement, that is the highest graduation plan. And you can see that the district is higher than the region in this area, just slightly. For the foundation plan endorsement, which is like one level down, it's, again, is higher than the region and the state. And then for the foundation plan with no endorsement, everybody is exactly the same at 14.2%. Now looking at the longitudinal graduation rate. We have, this is for the class of 2016 through 2018. We have mixed results with the all-student groups declining, as well as Hispanic, white and Asian, but with African-American increasing. And again, we're looking at the special populations as well. You'll see that special education had a nice bump from 76.1% to 80.9% going from 2016 to 2018. For economically disadvantaged, there was a small decline. And for English language learners, there was a small decline as well. And this view gets a little jumbled when you have small percentages, but as you will see, we are in blue, the district is. And the not-desired percentage is going up, so our dropout, this is, I'm sorry, I didn't even say that before, your longitudinal dropout rate is increasing for every, for all student groups and for all the subpopulations that are listed here. And then looking for all, for special education, economically disadvantaged, and Ls, everybody is again increasing with the exception of economically disadvantaged that remained the same. Okay, now we're looking at when the students go to college. This data lags even further behind. The most recent data that they're reporting is the class of 2016-17. So what you see here is that this, that Spring ISD is following the pattern of the region and the state, and that the number, the percent of students enrolled in Texas higher education is decreasing with each year. That is due to multiple factors. It should be noted, though, that this is only for, if they went to school in Texas. So if they went to school somewhere else, it wouldn't be noted there. If they pursued a career, they went into career in technology and pursued that fully, that they, those students also would not be included in this. Notably, in the next set of part of bars is the, once they do go to college, this is a very good statistic for us, is that we're seeing an increase when they do go to college. They do not, we have a higher percentage not needing remediation and completing one year. So now we're going to go into the staffing profile data that's available in TAPER. So what you have at the top of the report is the, what does each category include? So we have educational aides, auxiliary staff, teachers, et cetera. And below that, you see the percentage compared to the region and the state that we represent. And you can see for educational aides, we're comparable, auxiliary staff comparable, teachers were lower than the region and the state, professional support were higher, and campus administration and central administration were comparable. The highest degree held, I think this, part of this chart made it to the state of the district, so you've probably seen this before. This is the highest degree held by our teaching staff. For no degrees, we went from 3.3 to 1.0. The teachers that fall in this category are oftentimes from the District of Innovation. There's CTE teachers like mechanics who can, who are able to teach the class but don't necessarily have a college degree. For the bachelor's degrees, we have an increase from 18 to 19. And for our master's degrees, we're staying relatively stable, but notably, we are higher than the region and the state in master's degrees and doctorates. And then we're going to years of experience. In 2018, we had 1.6 beginning teachers, and then we had a large increase in 2018-19 with 10.6. Our one-to-five-year experience teachers decreased between 18 and 19. And then our six-to-10 years, our 11-to-20, and our over 20 years remained relatively the same over the past. Okay? So now we're going to go to the average salaries. Spring pays more than the region and the state, that's what it essentially says. The biggest difference in pay compared to the other two groups is 11 to 20 years experienced. So that concludes the TAPER part of the report. Why we, I'm sorry. What is incorporated within the TAPER report are other pieces of information that are required by the state, so we include that as well, and they are accreditation status, report on violent and criminal incidences, team's financial standards report, and then the campus performance objectives that were previously presented to you in September of 2019. So to make sure that we're checking our boxes, our accountability rating was a C. Our special education determination status was needed intervention. We are an accredited district. And the first financial rating was superior achievement. And the final piece that we will be going over is the violent or criminal incidences. And we report this every year. It should be noted that the way that, what is different for this year is that we have included the 2017-18 school year for comparison reasons. It is noted on the last slide, but I want to make sure that you're aware that if there was not a 2018-19 incident, the 2017-18 incident wasn't included. We're talking about one, two incidences. We mainly wanted to compare the ones that had happened from 2018 and look backwards. So the incidences that are highest for Spring ISD are PIMS Code Number 4, which is the first one here. Possessed, sold, used, or was under the influence of marijuana or another controlled substance. We had 362 in 2018-19. But this is a percent, as you can see, it's a percentage decrease and a numerical decrease from last year. And the other one that takes the majority of our violent and criminal incidences is PIMS Code 41, fighting or mutual combat. This year we had, or last year we had 2004 with 71.2%. But you can see that is a numerical and percentage decrease from the previous year. And that concludes the presentation. What questions do you have?
Well, I always like to look at data so I know where we need to work. And some of the things that are really looking important for us to pay attention to is, one, about the SAT exams. It's wonderful that we pay for students' exams and have more students participating, but I think that the other part of that experience is to be successful when you take the exam. And so I'm just very concerned about providing extra services to the AP teachers, whether it's AP prep camp. I've heard some districts do that. And there are other ideas to get kids up and running for these AP exams, so. Does the AP achievement bother anybody else? No?
Yeah, it definitely bothers us as well. One of the things that we took to the governance committee is the policy that they approved for us to mandate that the students take the exam, because at one point, they're not taking it, not all of them. And so we're not only looking for ways that our high schools can work with the AP teachers on strategies to get them to pass, but we also are working with making sure our students not only go to take it, but take it seriously.
I haven't compared all the reading data here, but it does look, because they all seem to be going up, that our emphasis on reading looks like it is working over the last couple of years. Is that?
Yeah, we constantly have conversations with Ms. Bradford and the team about literacy. And there's a lot of special work that we are putting into place on the new initiative that I announced yesterday. However, we're really wanting to get a lot more intentional in terms of what are the expectations for primary teachers in terms of closing that reading gap? So what is the expectation for kindergartners and those pre-reading skills, and how many schools and/or teachers in grade levels are able to do that?
And of course, I'm very concerned about science. I'm excited Mr. Ross is here, Ms. Bradford, and that we've got new materials coming in. I think the problem was seen before we had the data out, and that we've been trying to solve a problem, and we already solved. I'm the person who always believes that those hands-on experiences makes the learning stick in science. So I'm hoping that we'll see an uptick next year on that. Anybody else?
So, excuse me. This report always lagged what a year behind, right? Some expectancy.
The student performance is a year. The college readiness is a year, or is a year behind or two years behind, depending on the measure.
Okay. Because I suspect major changes in it, based on things that we have put in place, initiatives and different strategies, I think the upcoming year is going to show, I guess, a picture where we are. Race is, this is kind of, it's good, that of us old. I can say that.
But it is a two-year trend.
Yes.
That I think, I always like to see trends. And if something's a point off or two points off, I really don't, I feel like that could be testing error at the STAR test level. On page 15, I just worry about equity in our district because the different ethnic racial groups are not performing at the same levels.
Are you referring to the all-subjects meets grade level? Is this the same slide?
I know we don't, we do not believe that equity means equal, you know, that we are really targeted schools that need extras, resources, people, help. We've been going at that. And there is progress here, but if everybody just gets better at this rate, they'll never meet, you know? We need some groups to be improving faster. Of course, the other thing, whenever I have these conversations, you know, some people say one way to have equity is to have those top students come down, and that's a joke. We don't want that at all. We want to accelerate the, students are still struggling, and I would love the Asians to accelerate too as well.
Okay, I have a comment. And looking at the data, would the plan be to, and to piggyback off of what Dr. Jensen said, are we going to have some sort of targeted approach to get, to work with the students that are lagging behind in those particular ethnicities, particularly African-American and Hispanic? Do we have a, will you use this data to put a plan in place or to, as we develop the?
Right. Yeah, so the STAR performance data came out in August, and we, and good systems already know where they are before the test occurs. But, and I think Katar can speak to this better than I can, but the curriculum and instruction response to those results happened, you know, in June. So this is, and to Trustee Davis's comment, this data is old insofar as what we've, we've already done and had action towards it. So yes, but if you want to speak to it a little bit?
No, definitely, we look at our data ongoing, and we form either small groups or place students in classes so that they can receive either an extra reading period or an extra math period. We also have at the elementary level an intervention period so that teachers are able to intervene for their students just based on the data. And they're constantly doing campus formative assessments. We do district formative assessments. And so in response to that, we do group, regroup, and we target specific areas of need for students with either intervention resources or, to Dr. Jensen's point, acceleration resources, so that we're treating each student at their current level and where they need to go.
Could we look at page 17?
17? Certainly.
Now, we're looking at the higher-performing students and into the GT. I know that this has been a focus of our district in the last couple of years. What really worries me about this is that you'll have a student who could be absolutely top-notch, who's just meeting grade level or barely mastering grade level. It really worries me when I see our blue lines below the state and Region 4. It seems that we are not challenging our high-performing students enough. Is that an interpretation that the people get?
And we've invested, thanks to the board, additional funds with, we have a partnership with College Board. We do have our Director of Advanced Academics, Tiffany Williams, in the audience this evening, who can also share more about what we're doing for our advanced and gifted students. But like you noted on the data, we have increased the number of students in our AP classes for more rigorous and pre-AP classes. And also, we have a partnership with College Board for not just the resources and additional curriculum materials, but also for professional development for our teachers. So it is also extending the opportunities for the students and the rigor in those classes.
What I really got is that when teachers have a class where you have maybe two students who are done in 15 minutes, what it's taking everybody else 40 minutes to do. Sometimes teachers use those students to tutor the other students, and I'm not saying that's bad, but it shouldn't be a regular practice, I don't think. I think when kids are really mastering whatever it is, they really need to be, have other activities. And I know teachers need support in that area because, oh my gosh, when I was teaching... And I know teachers need support in that area because, oh my gosh, when I was teaching in high school, I told people it was like trying to keep 30 ping pong balls underwater all at the same time. They were always popping up and needing something else. And it's such a challenge to a teacher to address all these needs. So I'm just hoping that as we develop our curriculum, I'm seeing great strides, thank you, Ms. Bradford, because I get to look over teachers' shoulders all the time, and it is so much better than I have seen in the past. And I just want to, I know we're already doing the ELPs, you know, we're doing it for English language learners. And I would like to maybe start sticking in extra activities for the kids who finish quickly and need that extra challenge.
So, enjoy.
Sure, you go ahead.
So I have to say, I didn't really enjoy reading this that much.
I apologize.
It's not your fault. I do appreciate, again, it's something that we laud Dr. Watson for all the time, the transparency. I have a concern that we're missing an analytical opportunity by the way we disaggregate the data. We don't disaggregate, so our ECO dis, I'm given to understand that our economically disadvantaged students is significantly higher than the state and regional average. I would love to see a breakdown, and I don't know if it's possible in the taper, of how our ECO dis students do compared to ECO dis students in other districts and regions and across the state. And how our students that are not economically disadvantaged, how they're doing. And I'd like to see that, because I think that gets to the root of what we need to do to solve our problem. And we're just, like, looking at African-American, Hispanic, white, and Asian, I know that's what the state does, I don't think it disaggregates enough for us to fix our challenges.
I agree.
And you started on the direction that I wanted to go, so I appreciate that. I'd like to see that data as well. Another thing, one, this is good. We don't see any downward major trending, so we're starting on an up tip, but we need to move that up higher. What I really would like to see is some data around what's working as it aligns to the curriculum, the artifacts, the things that we've invested money in. And from, based on that curriculum or that program, you know, can we somehow determine if it's getting us where we need to get? Which ones do we need to sunset? Which ones are helping to advance this data? Which ones do we need to maybe invest more into? Is it a way to take this data and help us make better decisions around the curriculum, what we're offering, and what we're providing to get us a bigger lift?
So to address, first, Trustee Adams, absolutely, we can provide more analysis to you. The purpose of this report is really to report on the taper itself. So I do understand the deeper dive needed, and that's, I have somebody from Kendall Carley, who actually did this PowerPoint in the audience, that she's taking notes, and we'll absolutely do that. To Trustee Durant, we are working on, we have an ROI survey, since I have the principals in the office, in the audience, that is out right now, that principals are completing. And that's going to help us identify the most utilized instructional resources that they have, that they've been using this year. And then that's going to help my team then be able to call down which ones we're going to do a deep dive and the evaluation analysis that you're talking about. The challenge for us this year has been that there are lots of products out there, and our district uses a lot of them. So when you're a mighty team of seven professionals and three of them are really the ones doing that kind of work, we have to narrow the focus of what we're going to attack or address first. So you will be seeing that this school year, for certain.
And we realize you're doing a legal obligation here with a public presentation, and we want to be transparent with our community how things are going. But I think to Trustee Winford Adams and Justine Durant's comments, it would be nice to have some of this data, like you say, disaggregated, because I have seen widely different scores between the economically disadvantaged and those who aren't. Can, do we have a cute name for this other thing? That's the alternate tapper or the post tapper?
It's really in paper, paper taper and the online taper, but we can just call it the deeper dive for right now. And we'll come up with something catchy that law communications should do that for us.
So what's really going on?
Even though the deeper dive, I don't want to get too far because this is a public hearing. We're the taper report, so we'll have some other thoughts that we can, we can talk about later.
Okay, certainly.
As you indicated, this is only through the last two years where we are. And Ms. Bradford's information that she is collecting now and doing is more up to date as to where we are and where we stand in what we're doing. And I know you're doing those periodically, quarterly or semestral. Will we be hearing from you after this on where we are, where we stand?
Definitely. We do our district formative assessment, so we took those in December. We also have another round coming up in the beginning of March. And we also meet with the Assistant Superintendents of Schools twice a month to really look at their campus-level data. They, you know, meet with their principals, their schools are giving those just-in-time formative assessments. And so they then meet with us and share with us not only the data, but the strategies that the schools are implementing and how they are responding and have the action plans to go along with that data.
So we can come up with our own scores as to where we are now comparing to this?
Yes, so for example, we just finished the MOI, and so I think Jennifer just sent out some data to us this week. And so next month, we can come to you and give you an update on where we are and some of our assessments at the middle of the year, to give you an update on that.
Okay, thank you.
I think our board members are still digesting and looking at this a little bit, filling it out. So we thank our principals for being here for that presentation in case we had questions for you. So we will take a five-minute break so they can be released and get ready for tomorrow. Fridays are always big days. So thank you for joining us, principals. But any of those who have to leave, please feel free to leave, and thank you. Thank you. We will now resume our work session. And for our next item, I'd like to recognize our Chief of Staff, Julie Hill.
Thank you, Madam President, trustees, Dr. Watson. We have some second readings and a couple of first readings of policy tonight. So the second readings will go pretty quickly. Basically, if there are no particular questions, I'll just state it, and if I don't hear any response or any questions, we'll go on to the next one. So our very first policy starts on page 32, and we are taking a second reading of BDAF Local Officers and Officials Selection and Duties of Chief Tax Officials. So we'll move on to the next policy, which is on page 34, which is our second reading of CKC Local Safety Program Risk Management Emergency Plans. Are there any questions? Okay, if not, then we'll move on to page 37, where we have the second reading of CKE Local Safety Program Risk Management Security Personnel. Being as there are no questions, we'll go on to the next policy, which is on page 42, Hearing no questions, we'll go on to page 46 for the second reading of CQB Local Technology
Region 4 meeting, there was a discussion about this particular policy about a district losing X amount of dollars because of, I guess, a violation of the effective system. Help me out, Dr. Johnson.
It was over $2 million. Because they gave their check routing number and certain information to somebody who said, "Oh, I'm trying to write you a check, could you just give me this information?" And the phishing attempt worked, and the district lost over $2 million.
And they mentioned that, I looked at Dr. Jensen, I hope we have something, you know, in place. So I'm glad to see this. We made eye contact last night when they mentioned this.
Ms. Westbrook?
Yes. And we actually, we looked at it internally when we saw that, because we actually, believe it or not, get several attempts on a regular basis in accounts payable from our vendors. And I'll tell you where the hottest has been here lately is with our construction companies. So we have, we have phishing attempts that are mimicking our construction companies. And so one really good control that we have in place is that any time that we receive a request of that nature, and they come in, and these emails are very legit appearing, and that's probably grammatically incorrect, but they appear to be very legit. And so our process is that we talk back with our construction team, and our construction team contacts the construction company to see whether or not they actually submitted that request. And every time, it has been an absolute no, they have not been the ones to submit that request. So what we do is we, nothing is electronic. We're picking up the phone, we're talking to our vendors, and making sure that we're doing everything with actual vendors and not with someone who's phishing. But they are very good, I will say that. They've gotten better and better. And believe it or not, we get emails from you all from time to time that tells our accounts payable team to transfer money today. It needs to happen today. So we have very good controls in place.
Yeah. I got a very convincing email from Dr. Deborah Jensen yesterday.
Okay, they're mimicking you out there. I am not sending this thing. So we say that to say that we do, we definitely have those attempts that happen on a regular basis, but we're also constantly communicating amongst ourselves. And we don't take these incidents lightly. We look at them and we say, okay, what happened here, and what can we do, and what do we have in place to try and protect us? And of course, I send emails over to Chief Miranda and his technology team, and they're always assuring us that we, and we have, it's a phishing email thing now, that when you receive an email from someone outside of Spring ISD, it's huge, it's orange, and it says, just make sure that this is really someone you can trust.
Right, so I was actually in a meeting today with our IT folks going over cybersecurity plan. We have a report that we're going to be bringing to cabinet probably within the, actually, week after next, because we'll be at Holtsworth next week. And part of that cybersecurity plan, I think we mentioned it at the last board meeting, is all the employees. Part of the requirement is to have employee training. And so we are working on the employee training, and we should have something available by April. The state is still coming out with specific guidelines as to how they want the cybersecurity plan to look, and so that's very, very fresh. But our school district has actually done a lot in this area already, including, as you see with the Google, with the emails, you do get kind of a warning when it comes from an unknown network. And so there are things in place, more things are coming. We're certainly going to have the employee training that'll be, it'll be a video-based training, but it'll be a very vibrant training along with what we already do in Safe Schools, which are kind of that mandatory training that we do every year, every employee does. So there will be something coming out by April.
So is this in line with the training? Because last night, they discussed about training that will be forward to all the districts.
Yep.
So are we waiting for them to forward, or is it going to be in line with it?
This is going to be in alignment with what the state is recommending?
They mentioned last night, they are still working on putting something together.
Correct, right.
Finalized.
We're not, I wouldn't say that we're waiting for that from the state. That's the template, and so that'll give us an idea that we're hitting everything that they're requiring. But in terms of the preparations and the activity that we've already done to protect the district from a network standpoint, recovery standpoint, and the data protection standpoint, those things are in place. We're continuing to make those even more robust as we do. But we'll have the template from the state coming, just to make sure that we cover all the bases that they're asking for.
And basically, I want to say thank you, because I listened to them last night, they're going to be sending something down to start working on.
Yeah.
I'm like, this is already, you know, you're already late.
We have absolutely.
So I don't question, we're doing something already prior to what they're going to be sending down.
Right, right, right.
And we just need to batch they're doing, make sure we're meeting all the requirements. They're still trying to build the planning going forward to us.
Correct.
According to the conversation last night. Thank you.
I'd appreciate the, just simple directions of when we get these phishing emails, how to handle them, because my daughter said you should save the heading and send it to your webmaster or whoever.
Yeah, you absolutely can let us know when we see big attacks like that, or we see different things. We can and do send out mass communications if we're seeing things. And when they do come in, we do ban them and put them on the list.
No problem. It's all about cybersecurity, so it's right in line with the correct questions. I appreciate that. So if you can join me now, page 49. We have the second reading of DSSA Local Reduction in Force Financial Exigency. So hearing no questions, if you can join me on page 56, we have the second reading of DH Local Employee Standards of Conduct.
This one came up last night, too. And Winford did us proud.
Thank you. Okay, if we can look at EHBB Local Special Programs Gifted and Talented Students, it's Our next policy is on page 69, FDE Local Admissions School Safety Transfers. We're also looking on page 72 at FFA Local Wellness and Health Services Physical Examinations. On page 74, we have the second reading of FFB Local Student Welfare Crisis Intervention. We have an additional policy in this area on page 78, FFA Local. We have an additional policy in this area on page seventy-eight, FFBA Local Crisis Intervention, Trauma Informed Care. On page eighty-one, we have the second reading of GBAA Local Information Access, Request for Information. Beginning on page eighty-four, we have the second reading of GK A Local Community Relations, Conduct on School Premises. So, I'd like to pivot our attention to page eighty-six for the second reading of CDA Local, Other Revenues Investments, and we're going to have tonight the annual review of this investment policy. This policy is also a part of Update One Fourteen. However, if you would join me on page eighty-six, you can see the last sentence in the explanation of this item states that there's an annual review of this policy that's required in Government Code Twenty-Two Fifty-Six Point Zero Zero Five Subsection E. And I am going to pass the mic to my teammate, Chief Ann Westbrook, and she's going to take us through the annual review of CDA.
Thank you, Dr. Hill. And so, we're on page eighty-eight, and this is our investment policy. We're not actually requesting any additional changes to the policy at this point. As Dr. Hill mentioned, it was a part of Update One Fourteen, but we needed to pull it out for our annual review. We do follow the, what's called PFIA, the Public Funds Investment Act, and so, any of our investments have to fall within that act and all of the parameters and rules and regulations that go along with that. And of course, if you recall, our investment strategy is always safety first, liquidity next, and yield is last. So, as we find funds that we can invest, we do invest them, but we're not chasing yields, so to speak, we're focused on safety and liquidity first and foremost. And so, with that, I did want to reach back to a question that Mr. Ant asked at our last board meeting in regards to the change in the title of the funds, and I did not have a detailed response for you at that time, so I wanted to make sure to give you an appropriate response this evening. So, the change in the fund, and you see it's about halfway through the middle of the page there, where we're changing agency fund to custodial funds, and that's a result of GASP Eighty-Four, and GASP is Governmental Accounting Standards Board. And so, that's the change that came along with that pronouncement was intended to bring consistency to how local government account for their, what's called fiduciary funds. And for school districts, and for us in particular, our fiduciary funds are our student activity funds, and we also collect taxes for our local water district. And so, those funds are in, we hold those in a fiduciary capacity as well. And so, those are the two types of funds that are impacted. And so, the change in the language here is just, it's not a change in the way our operations are ran, or changing in any of our policies and procedures, but it does change the way that we present these funds for our financial statements. So, the first time that you'll see that change will actually be with this year's Comprehensive Annual Financial Report that we'll bring to you in November. So, we had a statement that was an agency fund statement that only presented the funds with assets and liabilities. When we bring it this year in November's CAFER, you'll see that it has a different title, and it also now includes the net position. So, it's just the change in how we're accounting for those funds, and we have to give additional detail with the way that we present those funds within our Comprehensive Annual Financial Report. So, that was the change, and I just wanted to make sure that we circled back to that. Now, as it relates to this policy itself, it does not make a difference with the way that we handle our investment funds, because we do not invest those funds, they are all in a non-interest-bearing checking account, so that the funds are always available for our students, for their activities in their clubs. And then, with the water district funds, those funds are coming in and going out to the water district. So, just wanted to make sure that we followed up with that information for you.
Thank you, Chief Westbrook. I'd like to thank the board at this time for the process that we've been using for the updates that come from TASB. And I think that we've got a pretty good system going after the past six years. But if there's anything that you would like to see us add or change, or that you would think would be of greater assistance for the updates, please let us know, and we'll make those adjustments. Another great thing that we've done with policy over the past several years is the creation of our Board Governance Committee. And thanks to them, we're able to review even more policies as the need arises, or actually, a timely review comes up for policies that need to be examined. So, at this time, we're going to look at two first readings. We have a first reading tonight of GKG Local Community Relations School Volunteer Program, and we have a first reading of BE Local Board Meetings. And I'm going to, at this time, turn the conversation on these two policies over to our Board Governance Committee, who have been doing the legwork on this one. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, everyone, and I'd like to recognize Trustee Adams and Dr. Jensen, who serve on the Governance Committee with me as well. We've had, we're bringing these policies as a first reading, they're inclusive in the Legislative Update One Fourteen around safety and security. And in addition to that, we recently passed Senate Bill Eleven, passed in March, that went effective September first of 2019. And as a result of that Senate Bill passing and the Legislative Update One Fourteen, we needed to make some changes to some of our local policies that impacted that. So, the first one that you see on page ninety-seven is an updated reading to GKG. This is a local policy, we currently have a GKG legal, but we did not have a GKG loco. And the Governance Committee did some research, we found there were several districts within our region that have a local policy, and so, we took a look at what they had within their policy and are bringing forward our recommendations for a local policy to the body as a whole this evening. This policy is directly impacted and affects our school volunteer program. And is this the first, this the first time you've seen? First of all, does anybody have any questions on it so far? Nope, we're good to go? And so, this is the first reading of the policy, it's to bring us in line with Senate Bill Eleven, and I just want to know if anyone has any questions with regards to it. We'll be discussing it next week. This is just the first reading. I don't know if Trustee Adams or Dr. Jensen had anything they wanted to add.
I would just echo that, like, this is about safety and security on our campuses.
Yes.
And bringing something more of a local flavor to how we deal with volunteers to make sure that they're properly trained for any sorts of emergencies, and also properly vetted before they come onto our campuses.
Also, I would like to thank the rest of our committee, because there are three people on our committee who have JD degrees, and it's not just you and me. So, thank you, Trustee Adams, Mr. Winkley, and Dr. Hill.
I would like to thank the district, because they did put together a committee that worked out, was to develop a local policy. I don't know if you want to recognize the individuals that were on that committee, but we appreciate their support and their effort in bringing safety and security around our school volunteer program. There's a lot of concern that's happening out in the community right now, especially with a lot of the shootings on campus and just safety, I think is what prompted Senate Bill Eleven. And so, it was really Senate Bill Eleven that helped us to drive that we have a legal policy, but that we needed to establish a local one as well.
I would like to emphasize that comment as well, Mr. Ant, that this is for the safety of our students and our schools. Sometimes people ask me about safety in Spring ISD, and I say it's not just metal detectors, you know, there are just so many parts of safety and so many facets, from physical safety to mental safety to emotional safety, all kinds of things. So, I think this is a good local policy.
And if you look on page ninety-nine, under Requirements, one of the things that we wanted to put in place is some sort of orientation or training. Some of our neighboring districts have in that, that first sentence there where it says, "Participate in Orientation," some of them say they have to attend an orientation. But we're recommending that we put participate in, so that we can maybe have some sort of a short video or tutorial. You may have a grandparent that's visiting just for the week, and they want to go read to their child that week while they're in town, they shouldn't have to be required to, you know, under that circumstances, to actually have to go through a specific training, which is why we're recommending that they participate, at least in some type of training, so they'll understand the importance and the security that's required on our campuses. Another change we're making is that we're making sure that it's all done under the direction of supervision of someone that's on that campus. And that's just requiring, even when we go out and we volunteer, we sign in, you know, so that someone knows that we're there and we're on that campus. Dr. Jensen does a lot of volunteering, has spent several weeks cleaning out the storage room on one of our high school campuses, but she checks in when she gets there. So, just making sure that someone in authority is aware that that volunteer is on that campus.
That was under the direction of someone.
Under the direction of someone, yeah. So, that would incorporate all of that as well. Anything in particular you think we talked about a lot in the committee I should call out, other than those?
We had several, it seemed like there were at least two committees that looked at it, as well as the Governance Board. And didn't you seek outside legal advice as well, Mr. Winkley?
We did not seek outside legal advice on this one, we were able to handle this one internally on the legal side. There is a committee that's actually still working on some other facets of how criminal history is going to align with and integrate with certain parts of the check-in process. And so, a lot of that committee input on some of those things, I did bring back to the Governance Committee. I will say that committee did not review this policy directly, but they will certainly be working within the framework of this policy. I also think it's important to note that, as we saw yesterday in the state of the district, we are rolling out some very comprehensive volunteer opportunities on the literacy programs, and so, this framework is kind of timed perfectly to help make sure there's a good structure governing volunteers for these more in-depth opportunities.
Thank you. Okay, any more questions? All right, we can move on to page one hundred and two. This is the first reading of the board policy BE Loco. It's establishing a local policy around our procedures. A lot of it is centered around what's going on currently with agenda participation. I may yield to Mr. Winkley to give a little bit more insight on this particular one.
And so, when you look at the blue and red markup on this, you'll notice that there are some blue and red markups that do not have any kind of highlighting, and some that have a very light gray highlighting behind them. The ones that don't have any highlighting, those are actually TASB changes as part of Update One Fourteen. And basically, what TASB's been doing there is adding board in front of president, adding board in front of secretary, it's really just kind of shock-keeping kind of things. What we really did here was, I know when we looked at it last month, there were some concerns from the board that three trustees shouldn't require bringing an item to the board any longer. So, we did go back and look at that, we worked with the Governance Committee, and the Governance Committee made the decision that any two trustees can request an item be placed on the agenda, and that item will then be required to be placed on the agenda.
And I thought the process behind that is, when you get to the point where you want to bring an agenda item forward, and you speak to a board member and they endorse it, and they say, "Yeah, let's go forward," and then you talk to a second one, and they say, "Well, no, I don't think I want to support that." Well, now you have to go through a third board member, and now you've established a walking quorum. And so, now you're in breach of the law, and so, if we do more than two, it puts us at risk for that. Any questions on that one? And then, our next one is on page one hundred and eight. Oh, this isn't mine.
I think that's the end of our...
I'm done, it seems like it was a third.
There is a third one that I'm updating, and we'll come to the board in March.
Okay, all right, in my notes, I have another one. Okay.
I can remind you later which one that was, but yeah, the board will see that one in March.
FL Local.
Yes, FL Local.
Going to come later?
Yes.
All right, then that's all we have for tonight.
That's all we have as well, thank you, Madam President.
Thank you, Ms. Hill.
Thank you, Ms. Hill. So, for our next item, I would like to recognize our Chief of School Leadership and Student Support Services, Dr. Lupita Hinahorso.
Thank you, Ms. Newhouse. Members of the board, and I really thought Mr. Ant was going to do this item. No, I'll go to FL Local. This is for you, Mr. Ant. Because it is actually what we spoke about, what our superintendent shared with the community yesterday. So, on page one oh eight, we're bringing before you, it is one item, but it's looking at two requirements from TEA. And so, these two requirements will get us closer to what we are now working on to ensure we're prepared to have full-day pre-K in all of our elementary campuses that are pre-K five. And so, this item aligns to House Bill Three, eighty-sixth Legislative Session, and as you know, that was a very long, late session. In that session, it does require for school districts to provide full-day pre-K for eligible four-year-olds. And it does allow the district to request a waiver if it is not able to offer the full-day pre-K. Because this legislation came down so late, we did not offer full-day pre-K this school year. So, by approving this board item, we are requesting a waiver from the state not to offer full-day pre-K this school year, as we were in the preparations for it. In order for this waiver to be approved, number one, approved by the state, it needs to be approved by our local board, but we also have to do the second part, and that is to request for proposals for partnerships from either nonprofits, charters, that would want to partner with us to offer full-day pre-K. And this is to help school districts that may be challenged with capacity and/or finance. So, we advertised in January that we were looking, an RFP basically, for partners to sign up to offer full-day pre-K with Spring ISD. The period ended this past Monday, we do not have anyone requesting to partner with Spring ISD to offer full-day pre-K, so we've done our due diligence, with the exception of Avance, who's our head start partner. And, you know, they reiterated the commitment that they want to continue to partner with us in offering full-day pre-K in our campuses, and they've actually identified some campuses that meet that eligibility requirement. So, this board item is for you as a board to approve the request to... to approve the request to waive the requirement of offering full-day pre-K this school year, 2019-2020. And we will be ready to offer full-day pre-K next year, beginning in August 2020-2021. With our goal of having all of our schools with space available, we will be providing additional buildings at Reynolds Elementary, because that campus is at capacity. And we will also be outfitting the 27 additional classrooms that we will need in order to fulfill this.
May I ask who the RFP went out to?
It was, well, we reached out to three local areas directly ourselves, but of course, it was published on our website and on our early childhood website. Did some direct reach-outs and then put it on our website. And then, of course, on Tuesday, the state does require that we have it as a public hearing. So if there's anyone on the very last day that requests, of course, there are specific requirements that they must be by the state in order for us to accept their proposal. But we would be willing to consider any proposal.
I actually had someone inquire with me and I directed them to the...
The website? Uh-huh, okay.
One of the things to note in that, sometimes people are interested until they find out that it's not just partnering. The state's requirement is the same, certification and training and hours that certified teachers have to have as well. And a lot of private places don't meet that. And so, it causes them to be ineligible.
Now, I do have to say, we had a couple that requested, you know, the information. Of course, they didn't qualify. But we also are closing out or working in a RFP for after-school daycare. And so, we have proposals coming in and we'll be bringing that to you probably next month, because we do have that RFP. And so, they didn't meet these requirements, but some are interested in partnering with us to be one of the eligible vendors to have after-school daycare on our campuses.
This is exciting, though. The waiver will not restrict us from moving forward?
Oh, absolutely not.
It won't say, "You all want it out"?
No, it's just for this year. As the administration, we just needed time to evaluate all of our buildings to make sure we had the capacity, time to be able to purchase all the required materials. And then, of course, we'll be recruiting, heavily recruiting for the additional pre-K teachers that we will need for August of 2020.
Shall we do it right?
Becca Nelson, do we have any notion how many extra students we're expecting?
You know, I've calculated all that. I want to make sure I put my finger on everything. The number of students do not multiply. We are looking for, to increase our preregistration. But remember, right now, our students are coming half-day. So we have 22 students coming in the morning, 22 students coming in the afternoon. The number will basically stay the same. We've seen very few enrollment increasing after we offer full-day pre-K. So remember, we have full-day pre-K in nine of our campuses, as it is now. The enrollment doesn't multiply like we haven't seen great growth. What does increase, of course, is the number of hours that the students actually come. So, two and a half hours to 6.75 hours.
And there's still an income eligibility requirement?
Yes.
Okay.
Yes. We still, the income eligibility or English language learner, children of deployed military, so those requirements, they still must meet that requirement. And that's a good clarification. Many people believe that it's pre-K for all. It's pre-K for eligible students.
I want pre-K for all. Yes, I do. We're going there next.
We're getting there. We're getting there, little by little. We will get there.
You read my mind.
Any other questions? All right, thank you. And this will require a public hearing, so we'll see it again on Tuesday, just in case there's anyone that wants to speak to the item. All right, the second item that I have is on page 110. And on page 110, it does not require any board action. It is more of an information item for you. If you'll recall, back in the fall, we brought to you the award of a grant with, and I want to make sure that I get the full name, it's the Substance Abuse and Mental Health Services Administration Grant. And we applied for this grant in partnership with Baylor College of Medicine. And so, you approved the receiving of this award back in the fall. And this is just to let you know that we are beginning part of the implementation of this grant. We will, in March, we will begin to offer teletherapy at Westfield High School. Teletherapy allows for our students, when they are in crisis and they reach out to a counselor, a healthcare provider at our campus, we will have the ability to dial in directly to a therapist on the other end, from Baylor College of Medicine, that will be able to assess the student online, similar to a webinar. And so, we've received an iPad where the counselor or the nurse, the healthcare provider, and/or the parent, if the parent is available, will remain in the room and the therapist on the other side will be able to do an assessment of the student, provide immediate referral if needed, and/or provide additional resources to the student in order to be able to address the crisis. And so, this gets us closer to providing mental health services to our students on-site when they are in crisis. And this is part of the grant, as I was sharing with you, that we received in partnership with Baylor College of Medicine. So just information to keep you up to date on the work we're doing around mental health services, related services for our students and their families. Thank you. Thank you, Dr. Hennehose. And now, for Chief Anne Westbrook.
Thank you, President Newhouse. And if everyone would turn with me to page 127, we have our monthly list of taxpayer refunds. Short, but the amount is about the same.
Sure is.
Just less people. Or less entities, yes.
I ain't one village, just a little doozied.
That's the hospital. And they had a property exemption for some of their properties. They got a total exemption, yes. Okay. And I wanted to mention while we're talking about taxes, really quickly. Mr. Adams alluded to it earlier, about the 2.5% in the tax rate compression. And so, we'll talk a lot more about that over the next two months as we dive into the 2020-21 budget process. But one of the biggest things that's going to be an asterisk for us as we go into developing our revenue projections for next year is what our maintenance and operations tax rate will be. And so, there's still discussion and there's a period of time right now where we're able to give our thoughts on some of the proposed ways to send the maximum compressed tax rate information to the districts. And so, what's being proposed right now is that the Texas Education Agency would send districts the proposed maximum tax rate the second Monday in June. And so, if that timeframe rings a bell to you all, that's about the time when we're passing our budget. And so, we did respond to that proposal, just to give our feedback. And it is, as any June 30th, school district is going to have a bit of a concern with the timing, because we have to pass our budget by June 30th. But we're also required to post the summary of our budget 10 days prior to that. So if we were to receive our maximum tax rate on the second Monday in June, we would find ourselves in a serious time situation there. And so, if we did have some disagreements with the rate that was given to us, that would also limit our appeal ability as well, prior to passing our budget. So we'll talk a lot more about that as the guidance comes out, as we get more information and how that will impact our budget process. So that's one thing I wanted to make sure to say. The other thing is, when we... Yes, ma'am. I will see if that opportunity is still open. We were giving our comments on behalf of the district to the county, to Harris County Appraisal District, and they're speaking up to the state level through the appraisal districts. But I'll find out if there's an opportunity and we may flood them with comments, yes. Thank you for that. And the other thing I wanted to mention, which again, we'll talk more about in the next couple of months, is when we came into this budget season, one of the big changes was the use of current property values versus prior year property values. And so, that was a concern, because we had to estimate. We did actually receive the preliminary property values this week. And I am happy to say, luckily, so that our district's estimate was very much in line with the amount that we got back from the Comptroller's Office. So now, that gives us a little bit more comfort level as we finish the calculations for the 1920 fiscal year and go into beginning our calculations for 2021. So just two little pieces of information I wanted to plug in as we dive into these conversations quite a bit once we get to the March board meeting. Okay, and with that, if we can turn to page 129. And this is our annual report on purchasing cooperative fees for the 2018-2019 fiscal year. And we're required to bring to the board a list of the purchasing cooperatives that we use and the fees that are associated with them. And of course, we know that we utilize purchasing cooperatives when we can, because we use our purchasing power combined with that of several other local governments. And it helps to reduce our overall operating costs, because we tend to get better pricing. So these are the fees that are associated with that participation in those cooperatives. And you can see on page 129 and 130 that we're currently members of 15 purchasing co-ops. And then, on page 131, is the list of what it costs the district in terms of fees to be a member of those cooperatives. And typically, the districts and the local governments are not paying the fees. It's the vendors who are members of the cooperative that pay the fees. And so, you can see our costs are quite minimal. In most cases, it's nothing at all.
Are we still utilizing our warehouse to work with other districts and purchasing power to buy bigger bulk and get a better price?
That was something that was explored early on, when we first built the distribution center. And we approached two districts and we never really got much interest. And I know exactly which model you're referring to and that we were going to be sort of the middle person in that. And we never got that particular initiative off the ground. Okay, so keeping with the discussion on purchasing cooperatives, on page 133 is our monthly list of purchases over $50,000 that were done using a cooperative. And as always, everyone is ready to answer any questions you have about the items that are listed here.
I don't have one about anything that's listed here, but I am still interested in the transportation for homeless and where we are with that. And if we're seeing, I know it spiked a lot around Harvey and...
Yeah, we can certainly provide a report of where we are.
It's come down and how we're doing, okay? Okay, perfect. Yeah, it was really high.
Okay, if there are no further questions, then we'll turn over to page 134. And we have a request for proposal for internet access related to our E-Rate program. And we had four vendors respond to this and we are recommending that the board award Interfacing Company of Texas, who we refer to as ICTX, is a company that the district has done work with for this service for a while now and has had a favorable, excellent service history with them. And we're recommending that the board continue that relationship with this vendor for the internet services, for internet access to services.
I want to compliment you all on those internet services, because Chrissy Adams, when we had that weekend workshop and everybody was trying to connect, to look at some information, and I thought, "Oh, boy", and we all did. I was just amazed.
Very good. If there are no additional questions or comments on that item, then we'll move to page 139, which is a financial update of our actual expenditures. We talk a lot about budgets, but this is our opportunity to stop and see where we are with our actual revenue collections and expenditures. And we send the board a copy of this financial statement monthly through the board update. But three times a year, we bring it here to the board meeting so that you have an opportunity to ask any questions or if there's anything with the formatting or anything that you have questions on, that you have that opportunity to ask here in the open meeting. So this is as of December 31st, 2019, which is the halfway point for our fiscal year. And so, on page 139, this is for our general fund. And we have here listed all of our revenues by source. So we've got local, state, and federal, and then other revenue sources. And of course, with our local revenue sources, our number one is our property tax collections. And in December, we're barely kicking off the tax collection season. But you can see that our total local collected through December was $54.4 million. In our state sources, the first line you see there, the Foundation and Available School Fund, that's the payments that we refer to as our state aid that we receive as a part, based on the calculation of our average daily attendance. And the total, including TIRIS on behalf, which we know is an accounting entry, where it's equal revenues and equal expenditures, including TIRIS on behalf, our total state sources received is $94.8 million. And the next item is the federal sources. And so, our largest federal source of revenue that comes in through the general fund is through SARS, which is our School Health and Related Services reimbursement. And so, thus far, through December 31st, with the SARS, our miscellaneous revenue, which is our indirect cost and the JROTC program is $857,000. And we've taken then just a little bit of auction proceeds under the sale of property. And so, our total year-to-date revenues in the general fund as of December 31st is $150.1 million.
Ms. Westbrook?
Yes, sir.
I have a question. OOTC, Westfield, they allocated three instructors, but one retired last year and they only have two now. Are they still allocated a third instructor? I don't necessarily have funded, you know, with the discreet and with the United States Army. But my question is, is that, is the school portion still there in case they want to hire their third instructor in this school year or what? For OOTC?
Okay.
Last year, I got a letter, I think it was the numbers.
Yes, it was the numbers.
But also the county.
I know, I think we had two.
Right, and so, we do, I just verified really quickly with our budget team, that we do have two allocated to Westfield based upon the number of cadets at Westfield. allocated to Westfield based upon the number of cadets at Westfield.
How about for the Caney?
We did receive a letter for the Caney as well, but I believe Westfield's numbers had been hovering around two for a while and we had the third. And when that individual retired, we closed the FTA.
So we lost that spot.
Yes, yes.
And the same for the Caney?
Yes.
Okay.
And I believe we added one at Spring High because Spring's numbers...
But their numbers are high. That's not an issue. They have more than enough.
Yeah.
Students.
Yes, sir. Okay. Yes.
Not to get into a long discussion tonight, but when we start the budget process next month, we talked earlier about some funding around the SHARs data and we were using it in another capacity. Do you recall that conversation?
Last, when we brought the one-time funds in October, it was because we typically receive one SHARs payment per year, and it's always lagging behind two years. But last year, the company that oversees the SHARs reimbursement caught up, and so we received the second payment. So we received two payments in the 2018-2019, or four of the years prior to 2018-19. And so that's why we had additional funds.
It's not going to happen again.
No, because they're caught up now. They're on track now. But, and it was funds that were due to us. It was only the timing that changed, and that's how we ended up with two payments in one year. And so, but I think the question you're getting at is what, yes, whether or not we give it back to special ed or put it in the general fund. And our process has been that we put it back in the general fund. That helps offset total cost. It doesn't go directly back to special services.
Can we do some... Yes, please.
Sure.
And I'd really like to see what others are doing to...
Okay.
Around us.
Yes, yes. And so we can, we can look at that and bring some data.
That actually came from the community.
I remember. Yes, ma'am.
Thank you. Trying to follow up on what I was asking.
Yes. And that's, we actually have to submit to TEA how we use our SHARs funds. So we should have access to that comparative information.
Comparative, yeah. Because... I'm not recommending we change. I just want to...
Know what others are doing.
And how we're...
Yes, ma'am. Understood.
But Ms. Westbrook?
Yes.
Ms. Westbrook, did you say earlier that we had already spent that, the SHARs money was just reimbursement for what we've already spent?
Yes. It's reimbursement for services that we provided.
So we provided, it was special ed services that we provided?
Yes, ma'am.
All right.
And so, and the...
And just because the other districts do it the way they do it doesn't mean that's the best thing for us. So when I ask for that comparison, I just, that's just informational. And we'll make the best decision.
We want to be educated, so when we ask those questions at particular sites, we can at least act intelligent.
Yes. And we'll provide some additional information that shows how much the district receives from the state for special ed services, how much the district spends, and how we utilize the SHARs funds. We'll put together a report.
Thank you.
Mm-hmm. Dr. Jensen, did I answer your question? Okay. Sure. On page 140 is the expenditures by function and object code for, again, the same time period, for December 31, which is about our halfway point. So our total expenditures is $147.4 million, and our encumbrances at that point in time was about $5.3 million. And of course, encumbrances means we've issued a purchase order, but we haven't paid it just yet, but we have the liability. And on page 141 is a comparison between revenues and expenditures at the same point in time in 2019 as of December 31 and compared to 2018 as of December 31. And if you look at the revenues, you can see the decrease in property tax collections because we compressed our tax rate. We're collecting less from the local taxpayers. And then you can see that the state aid is higher than it was in the year before, and that was intentional. And so, and then the next category is expenditures, and it's a comparison for the moment in time. And the largest difference between those two, of course, is payroll costs. And so at this point in time in the fiscal year, we're comparing our raises that were given for the 2019-20 fiscal year plus the one-time retention supplement to offset benefit costs compared to in 2018. We had also given a one-time retention supplement. So that's the comparison with the payroll as of December. That's the monthly financial report of actual expenditures. And as I mentioned, we also will send each month to you all in the Board Update as always. And if there are no questions, then I'll move to our last item for the evening, which is the Second Budget Review, and it is in a red folder. Next time, we'll switch with the table report because we prefer to be in green and not red. Okay. So the Second Budget Review is a look at our budget for the 2019-2020 year. That is the second time that we've looked at the budget since we adopted it in June of 2019. And so we go through each of our fund types and discuss the anticipated changes in revenues and expenditures and the resulting fund balances. So if you'll turn with me to the first page, which is the letter. And if we look at general fund, on the revenue side, we have an increase of just $30,000, and that is due to funds that we've received from insurance proceeds and from our playoff game receipts. And we had a small amount that was for private music lessons and some miscellaneous revenue items. On the expenditure side, it's a big number. It's a decrease of $9.5 million. And that is because in October, we did, you all approved, the one-time expenditure cost, which had some large capital items in there, including the Westfield JROTC Center, some additional funds that are going towards the Westfield Ninth Grade Center construction cost. And so what you're seeing here is we're transferring those funds from the general fund over into the Capital Projects Fund so that it'll be easier for our construction team to have access to those funds and keep it moving with the renovations and the projects that we have there. So it's a movement of funds, not a loss of funds. We also had an increase of $378,000, and that's due to an increase in our English-as-a-second-language ESL students. And we have an allocation that we give our campuses $1,200 per ESL student. So if those, the number of students go up, then we increase the allocation that we give to our campuses. And they can use those dollars for instructional materials, or if they have enough funds, they can actually add an additional position, which many campuses take advantage of that. So that's what that increase is. And then you see the offsetting amounts for some of the expenditures that were mentioned In the Child Nutrition Fund, we had no changes to revenues or appropriations, and we're still looking at a restricted total fund balance in child nutrition of just over $6 million. There were no changes to the budget in the Debt Service Fund either, and we're looking at a resulting fund balance of about $68 million. With our special revenues, we had an increase in both revenues and appropriations of $4.5 million. And typically, what we're seeing here is our carryover of funds from any unspent funds from the prior year that, once TEA approves them, they carry over into this year, and we have use of those again. So we're increasing the budgets to account for that carryover of funds. In the Capital Projects Fund, you'll see that offsetting $10 million. So there's a small increase of just $31,000 for interest earnings. And it's an equal, we're adding the interest earnings to revenue and we're making those funds available on the expenditure side. And then the $10 million addition to the Capital Projects Fund to cover the costs that were mentioned earlier, the Spring High School pool renovation, the Westfield Ninth Grade Center, and the redesign of the Westfield JROTC facility. And so then the next and final item is staffing allocations. And we're adding 23.5 positions to our staffing allocations. One is for administrator positions, 15.5 professional positions, three paraprofessional positions, and four classified positions. And the vast majority of those changes were a result of the decrease in the student-teacher ratio at the middle school that was also approved at the October Board meeting. So those are the highlights. And of course, you have all of the details. And so now these are all the budget adjustments that are happening there. And so we increased the rate of pay for substitutes that pick up a substitute job at the middle school lift six campuses, and that's that increase. Okay. And if there are no further questions, President Newhouse, that is the end of my items.
Thank you, Ms. Westbrook. I'm just here looking. If there are no questions for Ms. Westbrook, the Board of Trustees will now recess this open session and convene in a closed meeting in accordance with Texas Open Meeting Act Section 551.071 for the purpose of a private consultation with the Board's attorney on any or all subjects or matters authorized. Texas Open Meeting Act Section 551.072 for the purpose of discussing the purchase, exchange, lease, or value of real property. Texas Open Meeting Act Section 551.074 for the purpose of considering the appointment, employment, evaluation, reassignment, duties, discipline, or dismissal of a public officer or employee or to hear complaints or charges against a public officer or employee. Texas Open Meeting Act Section 551.076 to consider the deployment or specific occasions for implementation of security personnel or devices. No voting will take place in the closed meeting. Any action the Board wishes to take as a result of discussions in the closed meeting will take place after the Board reconvenes an open session. The time is now 8:19 PM. We will now resume our work session. The time is now 9:15 PM. We have no items.
You do?
Oh, yes, I'm sorry. Thank you. We will address the items discussed during closed session. Are there any motions?
I move that the Board approve the resignation and release agreement and the termination appeal style Spring ISD versus Don Klein, docket number 029-LH-11-2019, as discussed in closed session.
Thank you. It has been moved by Kelly Hodges, second by Winfrey Adams, that the Board approve the resignation and release agreement and the termination appeal style Spring ISD versus Don Klein, docket number 029-LH-11-2019, as discussed in closed session. All those in favor, please raise your right hand. The motion carries unanimously. Are there any other motions? Since there are no other motions on, no other items on tonight's agenda, I will now entertain a motion to adjourn this meeting.
President, I motion we adjourn this meeting?
It's been moved by Janet Gonzalez, second by Justine Durant, to adjourn the meeting. All those in favor, motion carries unanimously. There's no further business. This meeting is officially adjourned at 9:17 PM.